Special City Council Meeting will come adjourned. It will open, uh, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, with liberty and justice for all.
May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three council meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order.
In microphone.
Twenty-ninth.
In twenty-nine thirty, city council chambers will be closed to the public pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty. The city council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make meetings accessible electronically to all members of the public, seeking to observe and to address the legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of city councilmen or public for the city council meetings are waived. Please review page two of the document for instructions to the public participation. As we, uh, talk about, John Ebner is calling in. John, are you there?
I am here.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Bertone.
Here.
Councilmember Ebner.
Here.
Mayor Proton Vienna.
Here.
Councilmember Weber.
Here.
Let the record show, all five council members are attending.
Thank you. Oral communications? Do we have any calls? We have one column. I'm hearing. Thank you for calling. You're live.
Mr. Mayor?
Hello, sir.
Um, I sent an email over to Deborah in regards to the budget discussion that you're having tonight. I hope that it gets read, and I have some other concerns. If you'd rather that I call at the seven o'clock meeting, I'd be happy to do that.
Gil, use your judgment. If you want to talk now, you've got the microphone. If you want to wait till seven o'clock, that'll be up to you.
Well, I might as well get it over now. I, I asked the city council some time ago to look at the city of Laverne and how the residents can request service. Did you, have you looked at that yet?
You know, being honest with you, Gil, I kind of remember you and I talking about it, but I can't tell you that I've, you know, that I've had an opportunity to pursue it. I know that you also had sent it off to staff, and I haven't heard one way or the other.
So, uh, would you mind asking, uh, the city manager or acting city manager to take a look at it or have a staff member and bring it up at another meeting, please?
I, I definitely will.
Because it seems like when I call, the word they use is a complaint. I'm not complaining. I'm requesting service. And Laverne does a real good job of that. I, I had a real good response from the city regarding the speeding traffic on San Dimas Canyon. The city of Laverne Police Department called the Captain Berg, and they worked out the problems with the speeding since Golden Hills is working. The other question I have is that according to the city map and from what I, uh, city website, we're not enforcing the code, uh, in regards to parking. Is that correct?
Um, Brad, you want to address that, please?
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, yes, that is correct. At this time, we are not enforcing the parking control.
And there's another thing that started this conversation is I called Fabiola, because Fabiola told me that she's in charge of the code enforcement, uh, which brings up two points. Number one, she had a code enforcement guy in charge of the parking. And I said, well, what's he doing right now if he's not, if we're giving up the parking? And then I found out that she does not control the code enforcement people, and I've never heard an announcement from you. Uh, I will look, you know, whatever response you give to me, I don't know how to get it, because the Kate West thing is not working right now. I tried to get ahold of John. Uh, Lee, I believe his name is. Uh, I was told that I could hear it on the computer. It's not coming through. So, I don't know what to tell you, but I'll call you at seven. I hope that they read the thing, uh, in regards to, uh, the budget for me tonight, and I'll call you at seven then.
Thank you. And Mr. Gonzalez, I'm being kind of looked at by the city attorney. We can't have a back and forth exchange like we've been having, but I just wanted to.
Well, you can ask the city manager to, to look into it for me, can't you?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right, then I'll talk to him then.
Thank you.
Also, Mayor, um, it sounded like the resident may have been saying that the television system is not working. Is, is that correct? It is working? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Do we have any more calls? John? We'll give it about a minute?
I'll read his, Gil's email that he sent for public comment. It's different from what he voiced on the phone.
Okay, do you want to read it before, during his public comment?
This, it, this is, this is for the budget.
For the budget, yeah, I think we better go ahead and read it. Okay, John, there's no more messages? I'll assume no. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read, because, uh, Mr. Gonzalez referred to it, if you don't mind, please?
Contracting. Would you consider a motion to analyze removing certain contractors, like landscaping, to have city workers do all our landscaping? The motion to have department directors analyze cost of outside contractors and submit plans if we, city employees, did the work. It may be a reduced cost and support our employees rather than possible layoffs. Gil Gonzalez.
Thank you. Did our, our Parks and Rec, uh, landscaping people hear that email? Okay, could you maybe address that tomorrow or something? See what it says? Thank you. All right, the study session, staff presentation of preliminary, uh, year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one budget and proposed capital projects. This is session number two. Brad?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Brad McKinnon, acting city manager. Staff began working on the budget in January twenty twenty. Um, at the May twentieth, two thousand twenty study session, staff presented a preliminary fiscal year twenty 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 and twenty-one budget that included operations, maintenance, and projects that department directors feel are in the best interest of the city and their departments, regardless of declining revenues project, revenue projections, overall effects of COVID- nineteen. Um, as discussed at the last council meeting and study session, one of the biggest challenges with this year's budget is revenue projections. They're included in tonight's presentation to identify the comparison revenues, uh, estimated to be collected in nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty and two thousand twenty, twenty-one compared to our last actials, which were in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Almost all revenue sources have drastic reductions for a total of negative twelve point seven percent, or roughly three point two million in two thousand nineteen, twenty, and negative eleven point seven one percent, or roughly three million in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. We are in unprecedented times, and unless otherwise directed by, by city council, we will need to utilize emergency reserves to continue to provide the services, programs, and quality infrastructure to the community. This slide illustrates the city's reserve levels in two thousand eighteen, nineteen at eighty-two percent of the general fund operating expenditures. Given the projected decrease in revenues and recognized decrease in some service program areas due to the effects of COVID, the reserves are projected to be at seventy-two percent at the end of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. To compare the May twentieth preliminary budget that was presented in the last study session to tonight's emergency budget, the far-right column represents the reserve percentage, starting with the preliminary budget presented at the last, uh, study session on May twentieth. In that budget, if only operating and maintenance was included, no project reserves would be at sixty-four percent. If operating and maintenance and all projects were included, reserves would be at fifty-five percent, illustrated on the, on the far-right column. In tonight's emergency preliminary budget, if only the operation and maintenance with no projects were included, the reserve would be at sixty-nine percent. However, this does include a big, uh, discussion item, which we'll talk about later, um, in regards to closing the rec center. In the full emergency preliminary budget that's being presented tonight, which includes critical projects identified by directors, the reserves would be at sixty-seven percent. Uh, this would also include the closure of the rec center. The main point of this slide is to illustrate that we are in emergency and a portion of the reserves can be used, um, in this budget. At the end, staff is looking for direction from council on the amount of which reserves we use, um, which will be very important in finalizing the budget. This graph illustrates the general fund reserve balance for both the May twentieth preliminary budget that was discussed in the study session and tonight's emergency preliminary budget with, with proposed projects. If we continue with operating and maintenance, maintenance increased costs, and all the projects identified in the preliminary budget, our reserve balance would be at two hundred and sixteen thousand in the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. That preliminary budget had a reserve balance of roughly fifteen point nine million, which when compared to the proposed operating budget, left us with a reserve of sixty-four percent. If, in the budget presented tonight, if we had a reserve level, we would have a reserve level of sixty-seven percent at the end of fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-one, and ten percent at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. This does consider the proposed projects that were outlined in the May twentieth preliminary budget that were not included in this emergency preliminary budget or identified as critical projects being moved from, moved to fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, um, which is why you see that big decrease in, in that year. This would have to be addressed in next year's budget to see how we budget for those, those projects that department, um, heads felt are in the best interest of the city. However, they weren't on the critical list and moved to the following year. Uh, the emergency preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one budget reflects twenty, roughly twenty-two point five million in general fund revenues and a transfer of roughly three hundred and fifty-two thousand totaling twenty-two million, twenty-two point eight million. Expenses are twenty-three point two million with nine hundred and twenty-one thousand in transfers for a total of twenty-four point one million in expenditures, which is a reduction of eight hundred and twelve thousand or three point three percent compared to the prior preliminary budget that was presented on, uh, May twentieth. The emergency budget also reduces the expenditures for restricted funds that previously acquired a transfer from general fund in the amount of two point, roughly two point two million for landscape and lighting district, along with various capital projects and equipment purchases. Um, the combined reduction in maintenance and operation and transfers out from the budget presented on May twentieth had a total expenditure of roughly twenty-seven point one million. The emergency budget has a total expenditure to cover maintenance, operations, and projects and equipment that totals roughly twenty-four point six million, a reduction of nine percent. It is important to remember that these revenues and expenditures are projections and in many years have been off, and again, for this reason, no matter what budget the council ultimately adopts, staff would like to bring the budget back, uh, in September to identify if the projections are accurate and adjust the budget accordingly. Um, I would now like to turn the presentation over to Michael O'Brien, our administrative services manager, to go through the administration and general services budget. Each presenter will, um, be sure to announce themselves prior to presenting, so the public understands who's, who's presenting.
Uh, Brad, can I ask a question?
Yes.
The present budget, which is twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty, how much does that have to be readjusted? Because I'm sure that's being affected. How, how much is that going to be in the hole?
I'll have our administrative services manager, Michael O'Brien, address that.
Yes, uh, this administrative services manager, Michael O'Brien. So, when, after we got the eighteen, nineteen actials, we were projecting that we would end the nineteen, twenty year at about seventy-eight percent, uh, reserve, and now that's going down to about seven point, or sorry, seventy-two percent. So, it caused about a six percent reduction in our projected, um, reserve level at the end of nineteen twenty. Uh, just want to do a couple of housekeeping items before I get into the budget cuts for administration. Uh, we did make some changes from the agenda that went out on Friday. As you can imagine, it was a very quick turnaround between Wednesday night's meeting and getting an agenda out by Friday afternoon with this entire presentation. So, there were a couple of adjustments we needed to make, and I just want to highlight those quickly. Um, on slide eleven, uh, previously, we thought it might be good to show the grand total of the projects from the full budget and just showing the comparison reductions from Fund Twelve and Seven that were done by Public Works. Decided to scratch that and just actually show the totals of the reductions, so it's a little more clear and more understandable. And another thing, on the downtown decorative lighting, there were some other costs that reductions associated, uh, through other accounts. So, I wanted to show the toll, uh, that was deducted in Fund Seven, which is six hundred and ninety-five thousand from the prior budget that was shown on, on last Wednesday night. So, just the toll reductions for Public Works now being shown as negative seven hundred and forty-five thousand of expenses. And then on slide fifteen, uh, there were some updates on here. We're trying to show the reductions and crossing out the old numbers and the new. Some of the numbers didn't get transposed to the total on the right. So, on the one that went out of the agenda and ended up showing one million, two hundred and ten as the total for all the projects that are being, um, introduced in this emergency budget, but the total should have reflected one million, four ten. All right, so with that, we'll go back to the slide we're on.
Michael, this is John. Can you just, uh, when you flip the slides, just mention the slide you're going to?
Oh, sir, I thought I did. It was, slide eleven was the first one, slide fifteen was the second.
Uh, understand, so now, and now are you going back to slide?
Oh, sorry, slide six is where we're on currently.
Okay.
So, for those following along at home. So, in administration, we wanted to try to eliminate as many of the items we felt that we can get away with for one year, even though we know it's a cost to professional development and some of the maintenance needs that we have for our equipment and, and some of our productive, productability and some of the recognition of employees, we did feel that we can go through this year with reducing those items. Um, however, it would come at a, at a cost like everything does. So, just to highlight the reductions that were made, a lot of it was the reductions in travel and meeting, which usually goes towards going to our conferences, our educational trainings, um, anything to do with professional development and keeping up with legislative updates or GASB updates in terms of, for finance, and obviously city clerk updates and new laws and regulations that come through. We usually gain that knowledge through our, through our meetings and travels. Um, so we've reduced that significantly in, in all our accounts. Um, so we wanted to make sure we highlighted that. Also, some of the major ones, um, and a continuous improvement, we had, had but twenty-five thousand budget there to try to take a look at our efficiencies and to see where we can improve in those areas throughout the city. Keeping in mind that we do have new directors pretty much across the board, and they are still going through and evaluating their own departments and making efficiency changes now. We thought it might be a good idea to go ahead and delay that a year, let the departments do their own evaluations and make the efficiencies that they, that they can make now. And then after that, perhaps next year would be a good time to have outside eyes come in and give another look to see what else we can improve on. And not have a massive change, but just maybe a quick review and, and find those small things that we're still missing. So, we thought that might be a good one to keep till next year. Aside from that, it's mostly just some publication dues, which was for the economic development account. We have, um, a due for being part of the economic development, the San Gabriel Valley Association, so we removed that from our budget. So, those are mostly the main ones. Also, we're not going to update poll banners. We'll just keep using the same ones we have. Um, and some slight reductions for the productivity program, those are some mini Bs that we would offer for employees when they did exceptional work. Uh, we decided to eliminate that mini B program for this year to save money. Next, we're the bigger category, the general services. Some of the big cost savings we, we took out of this budget were computer professional services, which we talked about in the last meeting. Twenty-five thousand was for upgrades to our network security. We eliminated that. We eliminated the fifteen thousand for the Laserfish automation, which was a plan to kind of get away from more paper, physical signing or authorization and go toward more electronic automated process. So, we're holding back off of that for this year and moving on to next one, next year with that. And then just basically some reductions in supplies. Uh, we'll just have to make do with what we have for the year and some equipment bases. This is also another large one, the city webpage, the update we talked about doing. We eliminated that out of this budget and just having the, the current web host cost, which is about five thousand. And then we cut in half our budget for Excela upgrades as we constantly continue to develop that software program. Uh, we've usually budgeted thirty thousand a year. We've reduced that to fifteen. Along with that, we presented some equipment purchases and software purchases. Uh, we eliminated, as of right now, the service order request asset management program, which we budgeted to be about a hundred thousand dollars. We left in the code compliance vehicle, which is on a lease. Uh, we have the final lease in this coming budget, so after that, that lease will go away and we'll own those vehicles as it was a lease-to-own program. So, that one I can't get rid of. Uh, and we just left some, some general budget for in case there's equipment damage or downed systems that we need to make replacements for or replacing cell phones, uh, for the employees who have city-issued cell phones, so that budget stayed in. And with that, we can pass it on to our director of public works, Sherry Garwick. Uh, any questions before I walk away?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Mike?
Sure.
Under continuous improvement, what exactly was that?
It was basically a placeholder for whatever consultant we were going to research to use to try to help with looking at our department efficiencies to see where we can maybe speed up processes and things like plan review or, um, engineering permits or, or building inspections, wherever we could look at, just improving the way we do our business to get things processed quicker. That was the idea behind it. Um, like I said, we have new directors and new staff in here, so we thought maybe we could delay that for a year and see where we can find our own efficiencies now that we have some, some outside eyes in our own city to kind of make that, those assessments. Um, but knowing that we probably would help to have another, you know, professional come in and look at how we can improve those things.
Is that the forty thousand two budgets ago that we tried to appropriate for that?
I don't remember what we put in a couple of years ago. I just know this last year was twenty-five, and we were going to carry that same number over.
Okay. And then, uh, network security upgrade was how much?
It was twenty-five thousand.
And where is that in?
That's in the reduction of that fifty thousand. So, part of that fifty thousand was twenty-five thousand for the security upgrades.
And what was the other twenty-five?
So, there was fifteen for Laserfish automation, which I discussed was part of going more to an automated authorization rather than the physical signing, ink, uh, pen to paper type process. And then there was, excuse me, I have my notes. And some server network analytical software, that was ten thousand that we also removed.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Sherry Garwick. I'm the director of Public Works. For this budget, for the emergency budget, uh, Public Works tried to reduce all the general fund expenditures without a severe impact to long-term efficiency or impact to services. So, the beginning, this is a beginning of our, uh, general fund cost centers. Um, some of the major items are, we reduced our travel and meeting budget, which, as Michael, uh, just addressed, that's mostly our training budget. We don't do a lot of travel, but we do go to, we did send a crew to, to training. So, we did reduce that significantly this year. Other areas that we, uh, reduced was, uh, project management services. We use that for essentially going after grants typically. So, um, each year, we have different calls for projects, and we'll look at our, our projects that we have in our queue, and we'll see which one would apply to that call for project, and then we'll hire a consultant to make our project more competitive for the grant. So, that helps us get, get the, be more competitive. So, the, another one is the GIS ArcView development training. Currently, uh, we don't have a GIS position in the city, so we rely heavily on a consultant to come in and, uh, uh, go over our database and make sure that the GIS system that we have functions. We would drastically reduce the amount that allocated to that. And what'll have to happen is we have a staff that, that's the, and other assigned duties, um, that we'll, we'll have to address that. The, um, other departments do rely on GIS, um, so we'll end up having to support them as well. As well as, um, regulatory agents require, um, reports from GIS, so we'll have to, uh, provide those as well, or continue to provide those. Downtown sidewalk maintenance, that was what we had allocated some funds last year so that we could, uh, power wash the sidewalk. We intend to do that with in-house crew members. Okay? So, for our capital improvement projects, um, on our long-term projects, we've actually already reduced one project, postponed it. One of the items going into this, this fiscal year, um, we, we realized that we were having some revenue projections and, uh, discrep, not discrepancies, but we were, our revenue was not matching the rate of, that our costs were growing. So, what we worked out, uh, for this next fiscal year is to try to remove all of our capital projects that we could from the general fund. When we, when we did that, we had another project called Lone Hill from Covina to Sienega. It was, it was actually projected for this year. Uh, we ended up having to bump that out from this, this year, this coming year, um, just because of the, the funding allocations in the restricted funds. All the projects that are listed up here, um, are, are coming from restricted funds. So, they can't be used to offset costs in the general fund. They have to be used for street paving or lighting or water. Okay?
So, all those projects you have up there, you plan on continuing with?
Yes. So, well, we originally looked at throwing out all the projects and, or postponing all the projects. But there's a couple of considerations. These projects are all restricted funds, okay? With, uh, with restricted funds, the, um, the cost of paving right now is much less than it was a year ago. So, the tonnage of, the, the cost of asphalt is about fifteen to twenty dollars less per ton. Um, for, so that'd be a significant impact on some of these projects, like Villa Verde, for instance. If it's, if the cost of asphalt is sixty-five dollars a ton versus eighty dollars, what we estimated, that's about a two hundred thousand dollar saving. So, when we looked at the, postponing the projects, we looked at potential cost savings versus what we could get on interest with the, um, with the funds, and Michael had discussed that with me. But, um, so that's why we brought them back into this emergency budget. Okay?
So, what kind of money is it going to actually cost us out of the general fund because we have a, a match?
Okay, so the only one that we have that cost coming out of the general fund is actually Bedio. Bedio? And that's about a, we need about a twenty percent match, so it's about two hundred thousand dollars coming out of the general fund for Bedio.
And the rest of it is totally coming out of?
Restricted funds.
Restricted funds. All right, thank you.
Sure. So, and, so the ones that we brought back in, Villa Verde, Covina Boulevard, and, uh, and Bedio, all have some significant time constraints to them, to somewhat of an urgency. They have immediate repairs that need to be done or, or should be done in the next year. So, if we don't do these projects this So if we don't do these projects this year, then we have to go out and do some temporary repairs. So when we factored in the cost of the temporary repairs, which are about fifty thousand per street, and the interest that we would get from leaving the money in the account, and the projected savings from doing the work this year with a, a reduction in asphalt, we thought it would be better to, it would be more cost-effective to do them this year. Some of the other projects that are up there, um, our Gold Line, and also have some, some time constraints. Gold Line is actually coming from Fund Twelve, I'm sorry. Um, so Gold Line is another one that's coming from Fund Twelve, the Yard relocation, that's a hundred and fifty thousand. We may get reimbursed for that from the Gold Line for relocation costs, so, but we would have to front the money. Uh, the Park and Ride is, is, uh, coming out of the Fund Seventy-One, so that's a restricted fund as well. The Cash Basin Grates that are up there, that's actually, um, coming out of a, a restricted fund, the Water Fund, Measure W.
What, what is the Gold Line Park and Ride?
So the Gold Line Park and Ride, um, part of the parking lot on the Gold Line, or, or the Park and Ride, is actually constructed in the Gold Line right-of-way. So when they're, when they construct the Gold Line, they're gonna take their whole entire right-of-way. So we're gonna have to realign the Park and Ride lot, and the entrance is actually gonna come off of Commercial Street, instead of San Dimas Avenue. And when they do that, we'll have to reconfigure the parking inside the parking lot.
Does that mean that, uh, when that parking lot, uh, when they exit, it is actually gonna be behind the Memorial?
Yes, yes. Here are some of the projects that we're actually not doing, I, I do wanna address the, guard rail repairs, that should be a five thousand instead of fifteen thousand. We had originally wanted to do about fifteen thousand in repairs, and we've reduced it, um, by five thousand to ten thousand dollars, and typically, um, the repairs are required when it's been struck. We don't have any planned new guard rail installations at this time. Primarily, the projects that we're delaying are the lighting projects. Which also comes from a special fund. And just kind of going over some of the projects, um, that are proposed, the street repair projects. Just wanted to bring up, here's Villa Verde, see this darker pavement color? That's a repair that was previously done to hold the street together bef, until we could get to the major repairs. It's almost gone, so that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this one forward. But this is just an, a layout of the proposed street projects, this is, uh, Villa Verde, so we'll do it from city limit to city limit. And if the county decides to, to join with us, which they've indicated an interest, we will, we will work with them. Um, I sent a email to the county to see if they are, intend to continue, um, on a joint project, I have not heard back.
Okay, good, this is absolutely restricted funds, so it's not, nothing coming out of?
Right.
Out of the general fund?
Yes. So Badiyo is the one that has about two-hundred thousand dollars coming out of the general fund. So that has, um, the rest of the money is coming from, uh, a cooperative project with the county, and then also from the STPL funds. So those are the ICET monies from the fed, the federal government provides. So with Badiyo, um, you have typically so many years that you can, um, that you can accrue and, uh, uh, towards a project, so typically five to six years you can accrue. We get about a hundred thousand a year, so it's about seven hundred, eight hundred thousand coming from the STPL funds. However, with, with STPL funds, they expire, you can't use ten years ago. So the, with Badiyo, the reason why we would, first off, it's in, in poor repair, but we would, we wanna move forward this, to prevent expiration of any of the STPL monies. So for equipment purchases, we had on slate three trucks to be replaced. We are postponing that till next year, or we propose to postpone that till next year, or, or following year. With that, that concludes my presentation unless you have any questions.
I have a question on the travel training, um, there's, one, two, three, there's at least four different accounts for that totaling like eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Why are they broken out into different accounts?
For their functional class, um, so for the engineering training, we have, um, we train our, our engineering staff or the city hall staff for, um, they'll go to traffic signal operations class, um, traffic signal design. Then we have, uh, funds that go to our, uh, crew, uh, down in the yard. And we have two crews, one is a street paving crew, one is a, a sign crew, essentially. So there's different paving allocations for them, or, I'm sorry, different training allocations for them, and then we have a fleet mechanic, and he has another account that we send them to.
Thank you.
So, so let me ask you a question, under, under guard rail repairs?
Yes.
Do we have any guard rail material that we could use, person, you know, if we had some, some breaks, you know?
Yes, yes, we do, we-
Because when they go, they're, I realize they're not stopping anything, but they really look bad when we got twenty-five, thirty, forty feet of broken guard rail.
Yes, and we do have some material-
Our staff could do that with, with what we have?
Yes, we, we do have some material on hand, we typically bring in a cons, a contractor to do the work, um, for liability purposes, but we do have some spare material. It's about a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a linear foot when we do guard rail repairs, so we do, that's what that ten thousand is for, so if we do have some that is, particularly in poor condition, we will replace it.
But, and bringing, bringing in a contractor in to do it, and you said that's for liability purposes, our staff could not repair those?
Um, we can, we can to some extent, but, um, typically, those are more, um, swapping out a piece of metal, of the metal, okay? But anytime that you have a more, more intensive damage that, that damages the post itself, those posts are augered five to nine feet, so, um, typically, we bring in a contractor with an auger to do that.
You're talking about the plastic, the plastic fencing that goes along Villa Verde and down San Dimas Avenue?
No, no, tho, that's, that is not guard rail, that's, uh, that's equestrian fencing. That white vinyl fencing is, actually comes under Parks and Recreation to repair. The guard rail is the metal, the metal, uh, three-beam guard rail.
Understand, thank you.
Alright, I had a question for Sherry.
Sure.
Go ahead, John.
Sherry, I was just wondering, um, so, uh, you know, you had a lot of figures there, I was trying to follow along, but, so how much are you saving the general fund from last week's budget to the, um, this emergency budget? And how much are you saving the special funds?
Okay, um, sorry, I was on the run. So on this slide with, uh, budget cuts for the public works, from the general fund, we're saving a hundred and twelve thousand, that's on our cost centers.
Okay, good.
And then on infrastructure funds, we're, we're saving about fifty thousand, so a total of about a, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Did you say a hundred and sixty thousand?
Yes, total.
Alright. And so for a total of, of two-hundred seventy-two thousand dollars is what you're saving the budget from last week's presentation to this one?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Would that, uh, be followed by Hector Kissaman?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, starting with slide seventeen. Okay, I'm sorry about that, so, starting with slide fourteen, compared to, uh, last week's regular budget, which was at two-point-five million dollars in the, um, restricted funds, we have, um, made some cuts in projects that, uh, we considered being on the second tier on page fifteen, which then reduced the, funding requirements for the special or restricted funds to one-point-four million dollars. Some of the noticeable or notable changes, um, come in the, in the form of a reduction in, the trail fencing, which is what Mayor, you were discussing, so that, some of this, um, sum here of a hundred thousand goes into repairing the posts and rails, and then also for new stabilized surfacing. The urban forest reforestation went from one-fifty to one-hundred, which, uh, amounts to about a hundred fewer trees. If you, look down to Lone Hill Park, we have removed in Fund Twenty-One, seventy thousand dollars, which was set aside for replacing the playground surfacing, from thigh bar, which is a loose fill material, to the rubberized surfacing, which, um, affects accessibility as well as head impact attenuation criteria. The biggest and most notable change or reduction is at the recreation centers, the San Dimas Rec Center, where we're going from seven-hundred thousand to one-hundred thousand. Most of those, um, cuts, the, the amount there, uh, includes things that were scheduled for, or being proposed for replacement or repairs, such as the roofs, because there are three different roof systems there. The HVAC system, boilers, heaters, and, um, deck and pool resurfacing replastering.
Hector?
Yes.
Are, are we closing down the recreation center?
We are, um, hopefully today we get some direction from council as to how, um-
I'm sorry, what?
Hopefully tonight, we can get some direction from the council as to what is desired for the future of the rec center.
Okay, but that's a possibility.
It's council pleasure, I, you know, we're gonna show you what the reductions would be, should it be closed down.
Okay, thank you.
So, but this is, this is from restricted funds only, so this is not the general fund, this is not speaking to the closure of the rec center at this point.
I, I think last week we asked about checking with the school district, about ramifications for closing down the pool and, and, uh, you know, because we do have a contract with the school to, uh, for San Dimas High School for their water polo program, and a couple of people have texted and emailed about that. So did we have an opportunity to meet with San Dimas High School or Carl Coles from the superintendent, to discuss what, what effect we would have on them?
Um, no, the, an attempt was made to contact Susan Hume, who's Assistant Superintendent, and she, she does handle the operations of, of the facility, but, um, I have not heard back from her yet. So, um, we were, it was my hope and that we could get, that I could get some direction today as to, you know, what we would wanna propose or what council would propose, so that then we can then have those more formal discussions, because just in, in the discussions I've had with the high school, who are the ones that use that facility the most, I, I, I know that, uh, they rely on that center, substantially for their programs, not only their PE programs, but also for their, for their, um, sports programs such as water polo for boys and girls.
Okay, but, that I understand you, and maybe I misunderstood, you said that, uh, the rec center improvements were, were restricted funds, come from restricted funds?
No, they, they're set aside in a, in a quote, "special" kind of fund, but that comes typically from the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
So that is a, you know, a reduction of, of, um, six-hundred thousand dollars.
What's a hundred thousand dollar getting me?
Well, we would try to take care of the things that are, um, high priority, so, such as, the doors that need to be, um, repaired so that they can open and close a little better, security things. Um, maybe do some patchwork on the roofs so that we don't have any more, um, interior, damage to, to the, you know, ceilings and/or walls. We would also, um, repair some of the tile that's broken in the showers and in the sauna, so that, um, you know, it doesn't continue to then be damaged.
Okay, so just emergency repairs at this point?
Yes, and, and that is, um, you know, with the optimism that something large and mechanical does not, um, go down.
Okay, but I, I, I think I would have a real difficult time, being able to give direction until I have an, an answer from what the, what effect it would have on the school district. And I realize we're two separate entities, but, you know, we do, you know, uh, you know, our kids are very, very important to us, as your, our kids. So I'd, I'd really like to get some of that information back from the school district.
So hypothetically, then, if we were saying, what would the, you know, the impacts be on the high school? If it was closed, they would have to go somewhere else for their programs, such as water polo. They'd probably have to eliminate their swimming PE classes.
But there may be a possibility that they're doing that anyway with their, their whole next semester, next, you know, with the way they're, they have, they, when I talked to Carl Coles today, he had absolutely no idea what any of this stuff's gonna look like next year. He said, he, he said, "I'll have to talk with Scott," uh, I don't know what his last name is, the, the, uh, principal at, uh, San Dimas High School. So I think that, you know, we, we need to reach out to them and just find out what it's gonna say, you know? Maybe they say, "Yeah, we can do our water polo stuff and all this stuff, but we have to have, you know, we may have to supply us, you know, somebody to open up the door and keep the pool going." Maybe that's gonna be more like two-hundred thousand dollars by the time we add a staff member or staff or, or those type of things. I just, I just wanna know the whole picture before I vote to close the whole thing down, and what it's gonna end up at the end of the day. So that, that's just, maybe, maybe I'm not articulating it right, but, I, I'd just like to know what, what this is gonna cost us if, if we have to do, if we go to the extreme and close it. We still have a hundred thousand dollars in stuff we need to do, and we're still gonna have an employee checking on the place, and, you know, what, what can we do to help accommodate our kids going through the programs they're going to, that's all.
Yes, so we, so we have some, you know, estimations of what that would cost us. And that, that's, the a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or, uh, somewhere in there, that we are budgeting in the rec center, in the emergency budget, keeps the place going. Now, if the school wants to come in and use it, then it would be predicated, the amount or the cost would be predicated on, on what it is, the extent of their use. Is, is it going to be, you know, um, where they're responsible for providing the lifeguards, where they're responsible for? So those discussions, though, I believe they would come after the decision by us, rather than the other way around. But, um, you know, ma, maybe we could say-
But it'd be the pleasure of the council. I, you know, I'm just throwing it out, I'd like to hear some of that stuff. I think that, I, I think our kids are important, and, you know, they, you know, I thought, I thought I read somewhere, and I might be wrong, that the school district pays us like $38,000 a year or something to have the pool open and available for them. So maybe that they need to, and it probably won't, because I already heard there are several million dollars in the, in the hole right now, but maybe they want to give us a little money to help us keep that, that portion of the facility open for their school. I don't know.
I'll, I'll chime in that, I mean, I, I hear what the mayor's saying, and I agree. Servicing the youth is important, but I also think that, I don't believe the school district even knows what physical education's going to look like next year, and I understand, you know, the need to figure out what we're going to do with this budget. So I'm, I'm okay with entertaining the idea of closing the rec center, and I'm okay with taking a position that it is on the table for consideration, to be communicated back to the school district, and even Life Pacific University, that's also expressed interest in the recreation center. And if we have to come up with a à la carte type of cost menu, if people wanted to say, "I want to use the pool," what would that cost? Or, "We want to use the gym, what would that cost?" And that can be negotiated with interested parties, I think that's fine. But I think, you know, we have to look, everything that I've read is the city is losing significant amounts of money. This is not a revenue generator, it's a revenue taker. And, and, you know, without being able to appropriate the amount of funding we need to not put a Band-Aid on it, I think we need to just plug the hole and stop the water from coming in. So, that's my two cents on it.
So, if we, thank you for that. If we continue on down, I think, you know, the, another large project that's being removed would be the Via Verde Park Playground Shade Structure. That was $170,000, as well as the Community Services Building, the plumber building, audio and visual system. We realized this past, this past year, or in, in March, when the candidates forum was held there, that the audio system, that portable, just kind of bringing it in, is not adequate for hosting such, such events, and so this would account for a, a house system, I mean, you know, that would be running through the, the proper channels and with the proper audio reaches and that sort of thing. So, that's how we come up to that 1.4. If, if then, we look at the next page, page sixteen.
Hector, real quick.
Sure.
So, I'm just going to be, just make the comment to make the comment. If you had to ask me between a reduction of $50,000 to the urban forest, or an audio system to improve that, I'm going to go with the audio system. And that's because I think the civic engagement portion of what happens in recovery is important, and I think that the ability for not only people to engage with the council, but to engage in the town halls and the study sessions and everything else, is critical towards moving us forward. So, that's my two cents on it, but I, I personally think the audiovisual system is a higher priority, in, in my opinion.
Are you, are you saying that, I know that we're not going to get more into it, but are you saying under urban forest reforestation, you would limit that down to $50,000 and keep the 50 and the other?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on that. So, it looks like the urban forest reforestation went from 150 to 100, so dropped by, looks like about a third. And then the audiovisual, while I brought that up, of course, myself, and we do need that to be better, does this, does that audiovisual improvements and everything, wait, is that for the community services building, or is that for the council chambers?
It's for the plumber building, community services building.
For both facilities?
No.
And so, is that for, wait, is that for, you know, broadcasting and streaming the meetings, or is that for internal to the building, just to have like a PA and that kind of thing?
John, I think he's, he's only talking about the plumber building.
Correct, and it is for, you know, having a system internally there, in that building, that would be more suitable for hosting events such as the candidates forum, and also just for rentals and reservations, you know, if people want to show slideshows and have music going through the system, house system, instead of bringing stuff in.
Got it, okay. And what would you do, I mean, if you don't have that $50,000 this year, Hector, would you try to put that off to another year, or is that just out of the, out of the picture completely? For the AV?
Yes, so I, I think that the plan would be to, you know, put it in next year's budget. So all the projects we're postponing, this, this year would go into the next year.
Got it, okay. All right, thanks. Well, I like, I think that's a pretty drastic cut to the tree program, to go from 150,000 to 100,000, so I mean, I'm, I would say keep that $100,000.
But Ryan, Ryan's suggestion is we drop that to 50 and keep the senior community project. That's the way I understand it?
There, there may be another trade-off, but I would keep the urban reforestation at 100,000. I think that's already a steep enough drop. And there may be money elsewhere to, because I agree with Ryan, well, all these projects are good, but I agree with that, that is a good project to have. But I think we get more benefit or bang for the buck out of the trees. Obviously, that's just my opinion. And I just wonder if we could get that, the AV in the plumber building either somewhere else or wait a year?
I think you make a good point, John, that I didn't even think of, but I would almost think about pushing off the trees to the next year for catching what you just said there, that improving the audiovisual system may in turn improve the rental of the facility, which subsequently generates revenue for the city, and we're in a pinch right now for revenue. So, thank you for pointing that out.
Just for clarification as well, since we were talking about a $50,000 or cut to the urban forest reforestation, would it be a net loss of about 100 trees? So, if we were to cut that $50,000, if I make correct my assumption, that would be about 100 trees, it would get out of $50,000?
Yeah, so this year, with the 100,000 that was allocated in this fiscal year, we are getting about 150 trees. So, cutting that by, in half, you'd get maybe 70, 75 trees.
So be sure. Okay, thanks.
And, and just, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the explanations, justifications on those. So, if we were planting 75 trees, we would still be probably only gaining 20 trees, because we remove probably about 50 trees a year, that die, as you noticed, the one on San Dimas Avenue, that large oak. Trees are, you know, continuously dying, because they are living things. So, right now, after the latest inventory that was taken and wrapped up in, in March, we went from 1,100 trees in 2018, 2017, the last time they did this, to now being over 2,000 vacancies. So, every year, we're losing trees. So, it's just worth, worth noting.
Hector, funny question, but do we generate any revenue from our trees?
No revenues, I think they're all, the city does not, maybe directly, but I believe that studies show that neighborhoods with trees are higher property values.
Touche, thank you.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that. The, the city does not, of course, get direct revenue from trees being planted, but it really does increase the property values of every property that there is in the city that has, a, a street that has more trees than fewer trees. So for the residents, it actually does provide that kind of value. Not only that, there's all the other benefits that Hector has mentioned over time, including the, you know, the heat, heating effects of streets that do not have trees compared to ones that have trees. So, I'm just thinking that he started at 150, and he took a pretty big hit to go to 100,000. And I know that's a lot of money, it sounds like a lot of money for trees, but, and it's just a difference of opinion, that I think those are important. We also could look elsewhere. I noticed on our regular consent calendar today, and I was going to bring this up then, but I'll, I'll mention it now, we're changing the custodial maintenance and adding $50,000 a year, $55,000 a year to that contract. We also have a, a trail project, it's 91,000. I realize it's in this year's budget, but, you know, it doesn't hurt, hurt to save a few dollars this year and then use them next year. So I think there are ways that our staff could look around and see if they could do some things and not others, or, or that kind of thing.
Hector, just curious, does this number include trees that were required, for example, in John Began's project? Are we including trees that are being included in projects?
No, it does not account for those trees, because those trees are, typically, those are private trees, and, and the ratio at which we are removing and replacing is, is pretty fair, almost across the board, I mean, one to one or two to one in some cases, in the better cases. But when you're removing trees such as those large oaks in that John Began project, which had a canopy cover, and that was very big, as well as value to the trees, and replacing them with 24-inch box trees, you're really not getting anything even close to what the value of the trees were.
But it's fair to say that if the city wanted more trees, we could get them through the development that's occurring.
Yes, that would be one way of doing it, absolutely.
Thank you.
Hector, do you have any, any idea, year-to-date, okay, how many trees we've lost due to, that we've had to go out and take down? You know, like that big tree, like the big oak you keep referring to? I know that one, and how, how many of those have we had that's fallen and we had to go do something about?
Yeah, so just, I mean, anecdotally, speaking of San Dimas Avenue, since I've been here, we have lost three large mature trees. And, you know, San Dimas is kind of, San Dimas Avenue is kind of like an iconic avenue, right, with the, with the oak trees. But generally speaking, we've gotten to 2,000 vacancies, because year in, year out, we are losing about 50 to 80% more trees than what we plant. And so, that can only be solved in, in two ways, is, is by, you know, upping the number of trees that we plant back, or, I guess, you know, hoping and wishing that the trees last a little bit longer, but it, without having done the analysis yet, you know, but I can, I can tell you that our maturing urban forest is going to get to a point where a lot of these trees that we have now are going to be dead, right? So, it would be in our best interest to be proactive in planting ahead of time, because ultimately, the, some trees on, on a, on a particular street are all planted around the same time, which means they will eventually, potentially, all die at the same time. So, then you're, you know, you're going to be behind the, the curve there, as opposed to having planted proactively in those places where you're losing one at a time and taking advantage of those things, so that you have a healthy urban forest balance.
Super, thank you.
If it's, if it's a matter of 50,000, I mean, for the audiovisual thing, I'm sure there's some savings in this year's budget that also can be used for that. Meaning, you know, we haven't, you know, we've had, we've been shut down, there's been part-time staff that have not been employed, and certain projects that haven't been done. So, I'm sure we are under in revenues, but we are also under in expenditures. So, if we want to consider that.
Thank you.
One more thought on that, if I may. You know, this is the emergency budget, and it's the bare bones, what we need to do, at least that's the way, it was, it was, that's the terms in which it was couched for us. And we can change this, well, like we're just talking about now, up or down, and this may be an example, whereas the AV system is, you know, an important project to some, some members of the city council, I mean, I could go along with that and say, "Yeah, let's do the AV, let's add that 50,000 back in, keep the reforestation budget at 100,000, try to save some money elsewhere, but if we can't, then that might be $50,000 that we just end up spending, or, or, you know, maybe a little bit less if we can save some money here or there." Because I think we can do two things, and, and it all depends on how much we want to dip into the reserves, and that's kind of where we are right now, that's what we're talking about.
And one of the things we, we remember that we're talking about, that we're going to revisit this in September, so we can add or, add or subtract, or whatever, when we really know where we stand. Because even though the county right now seems to be letting loose with opening up and things like that, we do not know if we're going to be right back in this situation, you know, come the fall. So, I really want to, you know, look at, be conservative, but I also want to, you know, keep our city going forward, okay? And, and I think that's what the community wants, so, and, and as, you know, has been said, reserves are for a rainy day, and so we're going to have to get into them. But on the other hand, when you start looking at 21, 22, or 22, 23, and they're talking potentially $290,000 in reserves, I don't think anyone on this council wants to deal with that, that. So we need to, you know, even though something we, we all have a passion for, or something like that, may, may just not be able to be there right now, but we can always revisit it in September.
Agree.
Mayor, Mayor and City Council, is there a way we can get some direction on if you want to move forward on, on the next proposed budget, bringing back, to include both of these items? Or, I just, I'd like to get some clarity on, on what you guys want to see in, what council's direction would be?
I think I'd like to, you know, I, I realize what you want, or asking, but I'd like to hear what's totally proposed for everything first, before we start, you know, because two minutes from now, Henry's going to step up here, and he's going to tell me something that, you know, wants to require more money, or, or less money, and can that, can help me personally, other council can make, just make their, you know, address that themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody want to pipe into this?
I just have the same question for Henry that I had for Sherry. So, how much out of the general fund are you saving from last year's budget, and our last week's budget, and how much are you saving out of special funds? Or, you don't, it's hard to break it down that way, because I know there's a lot of transfers going on in this, in this particular part of the budget, just the total amount would be fine. We had 272,000 from, from Sherry, and I was wondering how much Hector was shaving off his budget?
Hey, hey, John?
Yeah?
We, we don't have Henry up there yet. Henry will be the next speaker. We still have Hector there.
Oh, well, send a message to him and just get the number back, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Hector, please, please proceed.
So, to answer the question that Councilmember Ebner asked about how much is the bottom line, so, on page 16, which has the slide that's up on the screen, it, it shows if we cut the, or closed the rec center, there'd be a $542,000 savings. That is, on top of the, if you recall, last week, the budget presented from Parks and Rec was already about 2% under budget from last year, so that was about $70,000 under budget already. So, and then on top of that, there's on page 17, I'm sorry, page 17, yeah, 37,000 more. So, that adds up to about $650,000 from last week in general fund. And 950,000, 960,000 in the project funds.
Hector, sorry, go ahead.
So you're saying $1.6 million, Hector, from last, last week to this week?
Correct.
Wow, okay. I think that's dramatic.
But that includes closure of the rec center.
Right.
Which is a big move. And I think the, the thing about that is, I'm not opposed to it, but I agree with the mayor that we'd like to know what that means to the school district, not that we would subsidize the school district, but at least they should be part of the conversation, and then we'll have to do what's best for the city, but I'd like to know how that's going to affect them.
Yeah, my, my biggest fear about the rec center discussion is, oh, one is, real quick, Hector, budget cuts, when you said that's if we close the rec center, is this an all or nothing, the way this is presented? So like electricity, for example? or nothing, the way this is presented? So like electricity, for example, that line item?
No, the five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand leaves in about a hundred-and-sixty thousand, a hundred-and-seventy thousand in the rec center for operating that building.
Just to have it physically there?
To have the lights on, to keep the pool running, in the sense, because we can't drain the pool, really.
Right.
Because then you're creating more issues. So this would be, that would be a bare bones, keep that building open, to then determine what you want to do with it, whether you want to revise the joint use agreement with the school, or with Life Pacific, or, you know, have it there as a rental facility that then the city could just use for any minimal thing. So to give you an idea, the rec center, our major revenue source at the rec center comes from swim lessons. And anything else, like racquetball, has been zero for the past six, seven years, right? So, but if you wanted to just make it no weight room, no dancing, or jazzercise classes, but strictly have it be an aquatics facility, it would be much less than. And then to look at your fees, and to also look at your joint use agreement with the school. So we have, you know, the team has been thinking of many different things and ways that we can, you know, do something with that building. The seven-hundred-thousand dollars that was in the project funds, I shared with you some of those projects and what they were and what the costs are. So that may be another thing that you may want to say à la carte, you know, we do these things. Your question, Mayor, was, what does a hundred thousand get me? Well, you know, let's focus on the things that are the most crucial, and keep that building going, and consider, you know, what this reduction represents is all there. It removes the, you know, lots of other things that are going on with the supervising lifeguards and things like that for those mommy and me, you know, kind of thing, you know. So, yes, to answer your question, long story, long story short, Councilmember Ryan, it's five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, that does not include that hundred-and-sixty thousand to keep the place running.
I think, as far as, I'm sorry, Ryan, go.
Oh, no, go.
You know, I think you hit upon a positive nerve to me, is we talk about an aquatics center, can we keep that going, figure out what's going on? And we close whatever those things, like, like you said, the racquetball club, racquetball, and maybe the weight room, and a few projects like that, because we don't even know if we have a daycare there normally, that, we don't even know if we're going to be able to use it at this point.
The student union, right?
Yeah, the student union and things like that. So we don't even know. So you're right. I would be able to entertain some type of à la carte system for the pool area, because those are what we really seem to use. So I'd be interested in that. And I, just one question before you, if you, I don't know if you're done or not done, but I understand that we're waiting to hear from the county on some variants, or something about our summer programs, if we're going to have it. I understand that, I've watched you guys do the Easter Bunny thing, I've watched you use, do the extravaganza, but I've watched you do a lot of good, positive things during this pandemic. And I'm sure that you guys will come up with something, if we get this variance, that will help the community out, you know, their parents, and, you know, in a safe manner. And I'm hoping that you guys are up to that task, and I know that you are.
Yes. As a matter of fact, I met with Brad, Acting City Manager, Brad McKinney, this, earlier today, to present to him some of our plans and programs that we have in place. The staff has been very creative, taking some of, you know, contracting, shrinking our recreation outreach, and our programs to be and serve essential functions. Aquatics was one of them, but, you know, being that with aquatics, we're not sure. But we are, we have several projects and programs that I think the community would really be interested in with some of these variances, including the event up at Horse Steve Canyon Park.
And one additional question, do you know when the actual school district actually starts using the pool? Because, you know, is that in September, or?
Yes, it's immediately, once school begins, it's in August, I think, actually. And so, but again, those programs may not be the athletics programs at the school.
It's in current that we should, should reach out to the school district and see, you know, what they have. When I talked to Carl Coles, he had five balls. He said, "I'm bouncing them all up, and I don't know which one's going to hit the ground first," you know, so they're trying to figure that out. But the guy that he really centered on was the principal at San Dimas High School, so.
Hector, on the, or actually, maybe for Jeff. So if we, if we have the pool open, and physical distancing is a requirement, then the city will have, will assume some liability in that, should we continue those programs if social or physical distancing continues to be a requirement? Is that correct?
We will just have to require social distancing, that's the general law at the time, depending on what the county order is.
So if the school district, for example, uses it for water polo, or whatever, but I would assume they probably wouldn't, because if this continues, you probably won't have water polo, then basically, the pool's there, and if you had just, it's not an Olympic-sized pool, is that correct? No, it's not. So it's not used for anything other than water polo?
Water polo, and you have some competitions, you know, relays, there's the swim club.
All right. So like, the mayor, like, wants his option, my option is to close the pool as well, under the condition that the health order continues to require physical distancing, which means there may not be a program whatsoever. So, you know, I'd love to see that option, and I'd love to see the option that says, we're not going to have swim for a year, you know, or whatever that is, and see that too.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really mixed, and I want to think that, that we, you know, are thinking about the kids altogether, too, so.
Once we have all the information, it'll be easier to make a decision, I think.
Absolutely, yeah. So we can always come back.
Yeah.
So if we close, if we say we're going to close it, we can always open it.
Yeah, and I think the, I think we do have the information. The information on the budget we have in front of us, with the way the health order is in the state and the county, is that there is no pool. It doesn't exist, it's not permitted. So, I mean, I think for the purposes of the budget exercise, we have to operate under the condition that the pool is not there, but maybe have a contingency plan that says, if that's lifted, how do we make that happen? And I think your, your idea of having a à la carte menu-type thing is, is the way to have that on deck, if we want a budget.
I can, I can understand that, but as we, you know, as somebody keeps saying, you know, you guys can do anything, you're the city. But the reality is, we can't. We have, we're controlled by the county, and who's ultimately controlled by the state. But I would like to have that mindset, that if we can make it happen, we come back and adjust whatever we're doing.
Right. So the idea, or the thought is that on June eighth, we would be coming back to the council with our summer program scheduled, and what those programs are, along with the social distancing requirements, as noted or dictated by the county, for your information, and to get some direction on how you want us to proceed on those events.
Okay, so let me make sure that I understand. If we close the rec center, when we say that tonight, or whatever we say, we close it, there'll be, in your mind, in your crew's minds, you'll be, have a plan that can come back and say, hey, we can do it.
Yes, so the intent with leaving some funding in there, and I keep going back to that one-sixty, is what comes in my head, is that it's to keep the lights on, you know, but it's bare bones, you need a certified pool operator there. Our in-house certified pool operator retired, so we're not going to rehire, we're going to bring on a contract service for that, which gives us more flexibility, and I believe it breaks just about even. So in order to keep, you know, the nuts and bolts and stuff going, along with the hundred K that is in the project fund, to take care of some of the most vital components. And Facilities Manager Brad Stewart could probably answer that better than I.
Well, thank you. I think I got it, got it all. Thank you.
Sure.
And sorry to have kept this discussion going so long.
No, no problem at all. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. So some of the other cuts, you know, that are noted here, so we have, in the landscape district, so that is Fund Eight, the emergency budget cuts a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars in order to make that, that fund balanced. So it comes in under budget. And these are some of the things that we did to make that happen. So we may have a little yellow turf, you know, in some cases, won't be lush green, it'll be a little yellow, but it keeps us balanced.
All right, well, going back to an earlier conversation with Mr. Gonzalez, and his email, he's asking about our contract with Naive, or whatever, Yavis?
Yavis.
Okay, and he's asking the question of why our staff can't handle that, and why are we, you know, it's like, the contract's four-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Right, right.
Okay, maybe you can address that right now, so we have an idea.
Sure, sure. So the contract is for about four and a half, for four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars, which includes a staff of thirteen, thirteen staff members, contract service staff members. And that includes, of course, the cost of doing business, right, their vehicles, their equipment, all the stuff that they use. The thirteen, four-fifty-eight, the amount of work, the vast amount of work that they do, includes not only mowing all the lawns, keeping the parks, you know, free of debris and trash, planters, weeds pulled, they also maintain the medians, they maintain the horse trails, they maintain downtown San Dimas, removing the trash at the bus shelters, the parking lots behind the downtown San Dimas, you know, the park and ride, all of these little areas, and they use about, they use thirteen staff members. So we have an in-house crew of eight, from manager down to maintenance workers, so eight, and it costs us about the same. So if we were to pick up that contract, it wouldn't be with our existing staff, we would need to hire more city workers. And just from my experience, a city staff, in-house staff member costs more than a contract service staff member. So it doesn't pencil out in any way.
Okay. And just another question, and it might not be for you. When I was looking at the contract, or when I was looking at all of this stuff, I noticed there was a deduction of fifteen thousand dollars for downtown sidewalks, okay? And I think that's absolutely imperative that we have the downtown sidewalks to be cleaned, because you go down there, and you walk down there, and I guarantee you, if we want to, we want to put our city on Front Street, we want to make sure that looks, looks good. And we've been there when the sidewalks have been very bad. So we put a lot of money into them. So I think, I think that's something that needs to be rethought about. Thank you.
Okay, the last slide I have is, is equipment purchases. So we had requested, proposed a, an F-150, F-250 in vehicles, and then there were these three pieces of equipment, the scissor lift, the Toro Dingo, and the walk-behind aerator. We scratched the Dingo, and are presenting this to you. But ultimately, if you were being kind, tonight feeling kind, I would rather switch the scissor lift for the Toro Dingo, because our existing scissor lift, according to Facilities Manager, is still operable, whereas we do not have a Toro Dingo, which is a tool that is used for excavating, trenching, rototilling, doing repairs on trails, that kind of stuff, that it's a very versatile piece of equipment. So if I could just, again, you know, make note of that.
Let me ask a question. If we have the contract with the landscapers that we're using, why would we need a walk-behind aerator?
Yes.
Wouldn't they be doing that?
Well, you know, because these are more specialized services, so these are the types of jobs that are typically done by our in-house staff. So, because we do have an in-house staff, you know, that is performing projects and tasks, and they have a list of things to do. The contractor is more of the mow, blow, and go, for lack of better terms, right? They don't necessarily do some of these projects, such as the landscape in front of the senior center, or in a park, they do a planter bed. They're also maintaining the sports fields to a level that the contractor does not. We can have the contractor do that, but it would also show an increase in their contract cost. So it's six and a half dozen in that way, but, you know, these are investments that would stick around for a while, but of course, they lose their value over time, and they do cost to maintain as well, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, don't go, don't go, don't go to her. I have another question. I thought, I thought you were going to go on with some more information.
No, this is it.
Okay. Back page fifteen, Foothill Boulevard, median landscape improvements, four-hundred-thousand dollars.
Yes.
Is that something we need to do now?
No, I think there's a, there's a big, you know, difference between a need and something that is, you know, a want, okay? So.
Is this a want or a need?
Well, again, if you drive, you know, along Foothill Boulevard, you'll notice that depends on what your level of, you know, your standards are, the medians all got their turf removed a few years ago because of another order from this, this time from the state, which mandated that all turf be removed from medians. So, or, or that you do not water them, right? So over time, the grass died, and now it's just barren turf, barren soil. So I think back then, that the city council established a priority, or a plan, to say every year they would take care of a median. And I think since that time, 2015, there's only been Via Verde, and this year, Arrow Highway. So we've not kept the schedule going. So it's, again, council pleasure, but, you know, in the, in the documents that you were given last week, it kind of shows the conditions of the medians, and some of the complaints that we get. So again, it's not a, it's not a need, you know, it's not like, it's dangerous in any way.
It's a special fund, right?
It's from, it's from Fund Twelve.
Yes, now, general fund hasn't affected it at all.
Well, no, but Fund Twelve is subsidized or filled with general funds. Doesn't, doesn't have its own fund source.
So it's coming out of the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Councilmembers, just to clarify on that last question, Fund Twelve, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, and Twenty-Three do get funded through the general fund. So what Parks and Rec Director Chris Stenman was referring to is, it's a special fund, but the money gets funneled from the general fund into these specific funds for certain projects.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Henry No, Director of Community Development. My presentation's actually going to be relatively quick. The proposed budget for community development was actually consistent with the proposed budget you have in front of you tonight. If you take out the two special projects, the downtown specific plan, and the objective design standards, where the majority is funded by grant funding that the city has received, or is going to receive, that was the only discretionary funding for the department, which would have been four-hundred-thousand dollars, and three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars is funded through grant funding. Tonight's proposed budget, the real only line item within community development that's discretionary is the travel and meeting. And last Wednesday's budget, I had already reduced that budget from community development, development services, and building and safety from last year's budget of forty thousand dollars. dollars to twelve thousand dollars. So that was already a seventy percent reduction that you saw last Wednesday. Um, the requirement for those classes are, the building official and building inspectors are required to get recertification, uh, annually, so they have to get recertified, so there's, uh, funds for that. And then the planning commissioners have to go through ethics training, and the Planning Commissioners Academy typically, uh, is where that they get that, that training from. So there's about four thousand dollars of that twelve thousand for, for them to attend that, the ethics training, which is a required mandate.
A-B, one, two, three, four, training? That's what you're talking about?
Correct.
They can do that online, right?
I believe so.
At no expense, I believe.
And we are looking at those, those options as well.
I did it. It's painful, but they can do it.
Okay. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. If it's the council's wishes, uh, really, the only two major items from community development standpoint is getting rid of the downtown specific plan and the objective design standards, which would reduce our budget by four hundred thousand dollars, but I would highly recommend against that if at all possible.
I just had the same question for Henry as for the others, like, how many, how much from last week to this week were you able to, uh, or how much did the emergency budget save over last week for, uh, general fund and any special funds you guys might use in planning, et cetera?
So my last week's budget was already my emergency budget, so the, unless it's the, the wishes of the council to reduce the budget to eliminate the special projects, I had already reduced the, from last week's budget to this week's budget, it's the same. I already, already reduced the travel and meetings by seventy percent from last fiscal year.
Henry, what pages are you reading from?
Seventeen and eighteen. And it's not in the PowerPoint, it's the actual budget document.
Seventeen and eighteen?
Of the budget document, not the PowerPoint. Mine was consist, mine with, my budget this week versus last week is consistent.
So you didn't put in a new document?
Further reductions, because I already reduced my budget
Okay.
to the emergency budget, the bare bones budget.
All right.
Um, and that was the travel and meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions of Henry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to add to Henry's concessions, the general plan update, which I believe is gonna be roughly two point four million, is that about right? He had cut that out, and obviously that is getting pushed back to a later date. Okay, so just for comparison's sake, this was the Schedule One that we provided for you guys last week, on Wednesday. So the general fund was projected to go down to about fifteen million nine fourteen, and that was, um, without projects, which would have been about sixty-four percent of the reserve. And then when you included all the negative funds, which were Fund Eight, which had the negative one hundred and thirty-three thousand, Fund Twelve, which had negative two hundred and eighty-three thousand, Fund Twenty-one, which was negative nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, Fund Twenty-two, negative one hundred and forty-six thousand, and Fund Twenty-three, three hundred and negative thousand, along with the equipment replacement, which was negative two hundred and forty-nine thousand, that would have left us with a reserve of fifty-five percent, or a total of thirteen million seven nineteen four sixty-six. After the adjustments, majority of those negatives and the other, and the special funds has gone away, with the exception of Fund Twenty-one, which is negative three hundred and twenty-two thousand six seventy-nine, which will have to be supplemented by the general fund, and Fund Twenty-three with a negative two hundred and ten thousand. Uh, with everything else as presented, the other funds now have a, a positive balance. And the ending general fund with no projects, just operating and maintenance costs, the costs of pay or bond, and the necessary transfer into the housing for the repayment of, of the loan from the redevelopment, from the general fund redevelopment agency that's being paid back, we have to give a twenty percent portion of that back to low moderate housing as part of the agreement. We're left with sixteen million seven twenty-six eight seventy-nine, which represents sixty-nine percent. And then when you include the projects that we're proposing to cover those negatives, it would take it down to sixteen million ninety-four thousand two hundred, or sixty-seven percent of the reserve. And just to kinda, I guess, go on my soapbox about the reserve and just kinda discuss, what is the reserve and what, what purpose does it serve? When we're looking at a reserve, and we're coming up with these percentages, we're basically trying to decide, okay, if, if all things went bad and we just couldn't get any money, just our property taxes couldn't get in, our sales tax couldn't get in, nothing, how long could we survive with the money that we have on hand? So if you look at this reserve right now, you could go about eight months under that horrible scenario, where there's a massive earthquake, or, and plus COVID-nineteen and all the other things that could possibly go wrong. That would help us survive until we can get funding back into our coffers, right? So at the end of the day, if we were to go down to fifty-five percent or sixty-seven percent, am I gonna lose any sleep over it? No. But the longer, more concerning issue is, we're getting to the point where our operating revenues are less than our operating expenditures. So while most cities, obviously, if you're gonna have a major project, you're gonna need to go into your reserves to pay that. You're not gonna usually have revenues over expenditures that are gonna cover large projects. So it's a expected practice to go into your reserves to take care of projects. But the idea is, do we have the replenishment coming back in? And where we're heading, and what we know with our expenditures going forward, is that those expenditures are gonna go up rapidly for many, many different factors, including, you know, liability trust fund with our police, our insurance costs, just general normal salary increases from step increases, purse cost is obviously a concern, and what's gonna happen there. So it's, how do we make, what decisions we have to make going forward to get to the point where operating revenues are, are covering or exceeding our expenditures like we've had for several years, which we've taken great advantage of? The other thing the reserves do is we get interest earnings on those. So last year, we had an extremely large number due to fair value adjustments, about one point three million, which is never the case. Usually, we average about four hundred thousand, and that goes towards doing projects. But keeping money in reserve also comes at a cost. What is delayed maintenance, or replacing material, or, you know, our materials, our streets, our parks, what does it cost now to do it later as opposed to when we could've done it before? So it's finding the happy medium and trying to find a way, cause eventually, we're gonna have to make these hard decisions on things we have to cup operationally, so that we can start having our revenues over expenditures, start replenishing. But there is also a need to get things done, so projects are expected to be done. So like I said, it's finding the happy medium and understanding that the projects you say yes to today may mean that there's projects you can't say yes to tomorrow. So just make sure that the right projects for our city, what we think is best to move forward with.
You know, one reason to go light on the reserves is that we don't, what's gonna happen two years from now, or three years from now, or four years from now, when we're still gonna need the reserves? So I don't wanna spend it all at one, you know, big swoop.
I, I agree, but finding that happy medium is.
Yeah, and the good news is, I mean, like I said, even if we went with the budget we presented on Wednesday, a fifty-five percent reserve is not the end of the world. You know, we, we still have a very good reserve to handle the unexpected, but it's really just delaying your difficult decisions you got to make going forward, cause the expenses are only gonna go up, and I don't know how long it's gonna take to recover our revenues from this event. Some people project three years to get back to where we're at at eighteen nineteen. I don't know. That's the big, that's the big what-if right now, is, is what are we gonna, how long is it gonna take to get our revenues back to what we're normal, normally getting? Um, and then how do we catch up with these expenditures?
Michael, you used the, the, uh, the, uh, time of eight months. Explain to me what, what, what that actually meant.
I'm sorry, the time of eight.
You, you said something about where we could go for eight months.
Oh, yeah, so basically, that just means if we had no revenue coming in, could, how much from our cash that we have on hand could we use to survive until money came back in? So this reserve that we're representing now equates to about eight months of expenses in a normal year. So we couldn't cover a full year, that would be a hundred percent reserve, to cover a full year of our, the legally obligated things, our contracts, our salaries, if employment works, we gotta pay 'em, right? So those legally obligated costs, not projects, cause we could always delay a project, but we have those operation and maintenance costs that are represented in the, these two columns here. Your transfers out, which is going towards bond payments and that necessary twenty percent to the low mod, and our just general expenditures. So sixteen million, if we had to over eight months, we could pay those expenditures, if we had no revenue coming in.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I, I agree with that, and it's, uh, just in, we're, we're in a rainy day right now, but we could have a rainier day sometime else, and so it's, you know, I don't wanna draw down the reserves as much as the, to the fifty-five percent. I, I can, if we wanted to go on round numbers, I could go down to sixty-five, sixty-five percent, if there were a few projects that needed to stay in, um, but anything lower than that this year would be too much, uh, reduction this year, simply because the, uh, the, the chart, or the bar chart shows us, you know, heading towards zero pretty quickly. Um, so I, I don't wanna get there any faster than we have to.
Yeah, and it's gonna come down to what projects you really feel need to be gun, be done, because if we do them all, obviously, our reserve's gonna be, be wiped out.
Yeah.
So next year, you're gonna see a list of projects that are gonna look really great and, and enticing to do. So that's why I just say, make sure that all the projects we're adding yes to are ones you really feel should be done, because, like I say, what you say yes to today may mean something you're gonna say no to tomorrow. So just keep that in mind.
Well, I would say, based, uh, based the budget that we get next meeting, on the emergency budget, maybe add in a couple more things if there's some strong feelings from council members on one thing or another, uh, or a consensus, or however you wanna do that, and allow yourself a tiny bit of flexibility there. Um, so I, so I don't think we're, you know, tied to the exact line items you have in the emergency button, budget. So I would start there. I would allow it to increase a tiny, tiny bit with a absolute floor of sixty-five percent general fund, uh, reserve, uh, existing in the budget.
And then that's gonna be, you know, to all your discretion, it's the, how low, how low you wanna go. Like I said, these are all projects that are worth doing, it's just what do you feel comfortable with going down to? We can make decisions from there on how to prioritize those projects. Um, just to kinda, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me ask you, I mean, just last election, we were going through this Measure SD thing. So we haven't heard anything about that through this whole discussion, so what exactly, or where are we as it relates to that, um, the five million dollar structural budget deficit in five years, or whatever the case may be?
Well, basically, this COVID-nineteen event basically high-tailed our projections by about two years. So the additional losses in those revenues just made that projection of completely draining our reserves accelerated by about two years. So that's why when we first kinda went over those figures and, and the meetings we had, we were discussing Measure SD, we thought this nineteen-twenty year and twenty-twenty-one would probably be where we may break even or still have some surplus that, you know, we could hopefully with, combined with the past sales tax measure, we could save some money and make some big, big projects, especially like the rec center, you know, save up maybe ten million dollars and just redo that instead of having to take a bond. Those are kinda the hopes of doing it early. Um, but now, without that, had we had it and got that extra four point five million, we wouldn't be talking about losses right now. Uh, we'd still maybe be looking at somewhere in the positive. It wouldn't be four point five with the deductions, but, you know, you get my point. It would've been a nice influx. Um, but now, if we wanna do the projects that we think need to be done, we feel need to be done, to have the type of facilities and roads and parks that we feel San Dimas residents want and deserve, we could be negative by twenty-two, twenty-three. Before, we were talking more, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, or later.
I, I'm concerned that, like, when we're talking about taking the reserve to a number, whatever that percentage is, is that if, if you just go with CPI of three percent every year, that's twelve percent in the next five years. Um, you know, on top of this now issue of the reserve being negative. Um, so that's just a comment, but as it relates to the numbers, I do have a question that, as I was sitting up late last night going through this, um, in the Schedule One presented on May twentieth, um, like in Fund Two, for example, um, the actual estimated beginnings was six hundred and two thousand something and other, and then in the emergency budget, it's five hundred and thirty-two. Why is there a reduction there? And when you go over to the expenditures in the emergency budget, there's a fifty thousand dollar increase, um, over what was in the other budget, which was nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, but when you look at the emergency budget, it's nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
And, oh, I'm sorry, for, for gas tax?
Yeah.
Okay, so what happened in that fund is we got the numbers, uh, I think on Thursday, was released the new estimates for gas tax revenues. So we incorporated that, so that reduction basically caused a, a projected loss of revenues of about two hundred thousand dollars over the, from nineteen-twenty to now. So the, well, now, ending balance in, in, uh, gas tax went down, um, so now that five hundred and thirty-two thousand you're seeing, and so that affected the overall, um, ending fund balance to one thirty-eight as opposed to three oh nine.
All right, and Fund Number Seven, um, the actual, in May twentieth budget, it was one point seven million, and it's two point three million, an increase of five hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty, and then the expenditures dropped. So, um, why was that increase?
It's because in this budget, we basically decided we wouldn't go forward with some projects, so the loss of those projects and not carrying those forward increased the beginning balance for nineteen-twenty, and then the, the ending balance for twenty-twenty-one. So basically, it's just deciding not to do these projects instead of going forward with them.
Is that the same in Fund Twenty-two? There's a twelve thousand five hundred, or I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase, um, in the estimated starting on Fund Twenty-two from what it was on the May twentieth budget?
I believe that is the case as well.
And then, as it relates to Fund Thirty-four with the successor agency, um, the expenditures seem to have been higher in the emergency budget by forty-eight thousand eight hundred versus what they were in the old budget, and why would that be?
Rather just open the budget and tell you.
Thank you, Henry, for reminding me. We increased the budget for the Taylor House, so we were short on our estimates of what we believed that cost was gonna be. So after Henry reviewed Taylor House costs, we added back in, uh, some expenditures to help cover that.
Thank you.
Mike, just, not, not under Fund Seven, the lighting, the lighting district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That, that, that doesn't include, or it already does include, the lighting across the street, the community park, that we were gonna use some, a couple hundred thousand out of that money?
Talking about for doing the sidewalk project?
Yes.
That was fully funded nineteen-twenty, so that's continued to be funded, so, but I, let me take, did we take that out, Sherry? The lighting for that?
No, it's, uh, 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 it's, uh,
In total, with the successor agency, we're going from what would have been twenty-seven million nine ninety-nine five fifteen to thirty million nine twenty-nine through seventy-six. So that concludes my part of the presentation. If there's no other questions, move on.
Mayor City Council, Brad McKinney, acting city manager. To, to end the presentation, um, we also still have included in this emergency budget um, filling the vacant positions, um, and new proposed positions. If the council wishes to implement a hiring freeze, for the vacant positions for a year, there would be budget savings of five hundred and forty thousand. If the positions were frozen until the budget is revisited and updated, um, in September on revenue projections, the, the savings would be prorated for those months, um, for those vacant positions. The new positions in the budget have an impact of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and in total, the vacant and new positions is seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven, um, dollars. So those are still included here and we'd like to get also a direction from the council on, on your feelings towards these positions.
You know, sometimes there's a position that's absolutely necessary. And some aren't necessary. I'm not sure, I know which ones are absolutely necessary and which ones we could do without. I think I would need your input on that.
Yeah, when you, when you look at, uh, you know, I, I definitely agree that we need to just put a hiring freeze on the above positions. I'd like some little more clarification on why we believe that we need, uh, I know we talked about the moving the, uh, PIO to, to a full-time and we just kind of discussed it a little bit. But why would we need a recreation supervisor and a recreation coordinator? How are we doing those jobs now?
If I can call in our Parks Director, Director Hector Christman, can you come give an explanation? And all of these positions have some sort of, of need, otherwise it wouldn't be included on the list from the department directors, but I'll call in them to answer any questions.
Good evening, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So I'd like you to kind of, um, take into account or consideration that, um, the Parks and Recreation General Fund, the Department General Fund, was under budget despite the new positions. And so when you lump all the numbers in like this, it doesn't really do me any favors or the department any favors. Because we are utilizing existing staffing savings, cost savings, by not hiring a certain person, by shifting people over. And we analyzed the department, um, in, in a way that we felt that it would better serve or best serve the community. Um, hiring an additional recreation supervisor and a coordinator would be to take some of the load off of Jay, who is not having, um, doing his role as a supervisor. He's more, more or less an additional coordinator because he's out there doing all the stuff as opposed to being a supervisor in a supervisory role, which evaluates employees and, and then does forecasting and future projects and programs and things of that sort. Um, so the thought would be is that the additional supervisor and coordinator would pick up the facility rental program that we currently have under facilities. So there, there would be a s, a specific, um, person, a coordinator, assigned to that, who would also be looking at fee studies and different kinds of costs associated with trying to maximize our revenue generation from our, our buildings. So there's a lot of time when our buildings sit empty in the evenings. An empty building doesn't generate any revenue. So if we can get programs in there, if we could look at the right fee structures, we could improve and increase our revenue generation. On top of that, the programming supervisor and coordinator, they would, um, you know, better serve the senior center, which is where they would be housed. Um, because Dom would now have, you know, the, Dominique would, would now focus on those things that are senior, senior services and trying to maximize that. As you can see from our San Dimas cares pro, program, the impact that we've had on, on that demographic. And if all things considered, if we were doing our regular jobs right now, that would never have been able to be pulled off. Anything of that sort couldn't be pulled off because our plate or their plate is extremely full. So now, um, this would maximize and make our, our department the, the best it could be because we would have the right people in the right places. We're not asking for additional funding. We're saying we're coming in under budget. The people and the bodies and the employees are just gonna go in the right places.
Okay, um, talking about the coordinator for the plumber building and rentals and stuff like that, um, I think that's Brad Stewart now?
Correct.
Okay, and, you know, I hate to go backwards, but Karen handled that position for years and she did that same, same job, handled the rentals and make sure the things were done. And they handled that through your, your recreation, uh, staff over there, the front counter. They, they, they did the rentals. Karen made sure that it was done. And I hate to go back saying, you know, she did a great job, but she did. But the question is, you know, why can't Brad continue to, that, that job on? At least at this period in time?
Well, Brad, if, 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 um, if you didn't know, Brad is actually doing two jobs. He's doing the job that Karen was doing and he's doing his old former job because we haven't hired anybody. So he is, you know, he's a diligent staff, you know, employee. He's dedicated to this city. Um, I don't know how many, the countless hours that he puts in, time and energy. The fact that if we hired and filled that position, which would be the, the appropriate thing to do, because you, you should not put both of those jobs on one person. Um, because things will fall through the cracks, things are not gonna get done to their best. That now by just simply doing that or refilling the people in, in the places where we had them would cost the city more money. So it's creative in the sense that we are using and maximizing our resources to be able to request two new positions, yet come in under budget. So, and we're not, you know, we're not, uh, doing anything that, um, isn't appropriate or anything. We are doing, we went through and did an analysis of our department and determined that we didn't need these folks. We didn't need these folks. In, in maintenance, rather than in, in landscape, we're gonna move one of those staff over to fill that supervisor position in facilities. Because in landscape, we have two supervisors. So a supervisor by title and an arborist, but they make the same. So we're gonna maximize that arborist and then use that supervisor in facilities. So, so we're, we're moving things around.
And I, I appreciate that, but I'll put you on the spot, okay? If you've only got one of those positions, what do you want?
Between supervisor in facilities?
Recreation supervisor and recreation coordinator. If you only got one, at, at the end of the day?
Probably the coordinator. And so, but, but that would mean still filling the supervisor position, correct? In, 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 uh, facilities?
Well, I don't.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll just say to the mayor's earlier comment, it pains me. I'm not saying no. I'm just saying not right now, I guess is the earliest, easiest way to say it, that, you know, um, to me, that when the mayor said earlier, you know, he's okay with all these listed positions for freezing, I'm in line with that, including the proposed new positions. Um, just because I don't know that we're at a place yet with the reopening and everything else that's going on, um, to take this on. I mean, I, I think that we're not in a place just yet, and I know we have things coming you're gonna present and other departments are gonna present, um, regarding the deliverables to the community and the service moving forward, right? But we still don't know what that is and we're still not talking about opening. So I mean, I think, um, in that regard, and to be perfectly honest about the, the PIO position, um, you know, I was thinking, why, why would we not look at converting, uh, the parking enforcement to full-time? I mean, that's a, that's a revenue generator for the city. We have parking issues that are occurring on other times than we're doing parking enforcement right now. And I think there's areas where we've even discussed permitting opportunities. Um, so when we start talking about revenue generation or converting a position to full-time from part-time, you know, I'd like to see us thinking a little bit more of, okay, how are we gonna help offset the tough time? Um, and, you know, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars isn't a small number. That's not to say that I'm saying we eliminate those positions. I don't think we need to eliminate those positions. I think every position on here is outlined, was outlined for a specific reason. But I do think at this point, with where we're at in the game, I think we should freeze the positions and the hiring, uh, and we can reevaluate it in September. That's just my thought.
You know, I, I agree, especially when you add the, uh, reevaluate it in September. Uh, but, uh, and we talk about your, the parking enforcement. I think as, I think everybody knows that we had nothing but revolution and problems yesterday dealing with the trailhead and we got neighbors up, upset who want permit-type parking and all of this other stuff. We, you know, Andy Berg had to actually have a deputy up there trying to control, control the, the parking situation. And I don't know how many parking tickets she, she wrote, but I know that she, her hand was busy and she probably ran out of ink. Because there are places that we might do it, so that might be a good, I never really thought about it, but that might be a good idea of ta, talking about that downline.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're kind of running up against the, the, uh, regular meeting start time.
Yeah, I, I know, I've, I've, uh, we, we've passed it.
Yeah, and I'll just say that Hector's doing a pretty good job with the staff he has. And I think the Parks and Rec Department is, uh, well, the departments are important, but people really appreciate kinds of things that are happening, uh, that were happening in the community. And I think that the positions he's proposing are actually worthwhile. But, you know, open to suggestions, so I'm not hard and fast on any particular thing.
Just to add to what Hector was talking, and we do have a note down there at the bottom, you can see. If he, his basic restructuring meant a lot of not bringing in the part-time staff that he would normally need to run because he's basically replacing those hours with the full-time staff. So if we are not gonna hire those, then we would probably have to expect to have some sort of increased budget for part-time staff. And that is a growing expense with the minimum wage increases every year. That's getting closer and closer to basically being like a full-time person with the, when you consider all those increases and those costs. So just something to consider, um, that there will be, have to be some sort of adjustment in the part-time budget because we're not gonna have these positions that he's kind of, you know, allocated to take up that, that work slot.
Okay. You know, we are at seven o'clock, it's standard time for our regular meeting. How do we anticipate, we, you know, giving the, the community the opportunity to talk? We, do we continue with this and then redo the meeting? What, what do you think? Dennis? John?
I, I think we have a public, uh, hearing on the budget next meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Or unless it's the meeting after that.
I, I think you're right, John, but we also said that, that, you know, we'd handle calls, any calls that came in.
Oh, calls that came in, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I didn't, didn't hear you, Emmett. Yeah, definitely, we should take the calls, I would say.
So, so we'll take, you know, do we have anybody on the line right now, John?
Mayor City Council, we're waiting for any calls. So moving forward, um, Councilwoman Edner is correct. Moving to the June ninth meeting, we will bring back a proposed budget, um, that will have public comment. Um, and there's some items that you guys brought up, the council brought up tonight, um, regarding urban forest, audio system, downtown sidewalks, foothold meeting landscaping, some equipment and staffing that we, we can include in the proposed budget for June ninth and have that discussion, um, and get council direction on the, on the June ninth before we bring the final budget back to the June twenty-third meeting. Um, and if we include all these things that are in there, you'll, council will be able to see how much, what our reserve level is at. And then we can get some clear direction on those items. Is, is that okay with council?
Um, you know, anybody, do you, do you think you got a good handle on what, what we're thinking? Because I don't think we do.
Well, let me, let me just add, because since we're wrapping this up. Um, network security, I think is important. Many local governments are being held by ransomware. So I'd rather look at investing in that sooner than later, um, to not have to pay fifty thousand dollars to have someone come in here and undo that. Um, so, uh.
Where are you at on that?
That's just notes out of, uh, what we went through. But John, it was presented earlier on, um, in one of the, it was part of the fifty thousand. Uh, I think Mike went through it earlier. Um, and then continuous improvement and travel and training. Um, Brad, all of those, did that cut travel training or was it a reduction? As it relates to travel and training for most of the departments?
In, in the proposed budget, it, it reduced it drastically. We, we do have some travel and training for essential training. Um, but most budgets were reduced fifty or seventy-five percent in travel and training.
Yeah, I, I get a kick out of, um, asking people to do more with less and then not educating them to do their jobs better. So, um, continuous improvement to me is something that I think should remain, um, just me personally. And somewhat travel and training, um, to a certain degree. I'd rather see cuts come from other places. Um, but I think investing in the staff to have professional development so they do their jobs better uh, is a higher priority to me than some other things. That's just my.
Yeah, one's called.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, according to John, we have one call, John?
Thank you for calling your live.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jan Bartolo. And I'm calling in with a brief comment at, uh, the moment on the budget study session, but I also wanted to comment on one of the hearings tonight regarding the, uh, low-density, uh, multi，在 income housing. And I wondered if it was appropriate to discuss both those items now or speak just to the budget item and then call back, uh, regarding the housing issue?
Jan, I think I would prefer you to go ahead and just speak to the budget issue. And, you know, because we're already running late, if you don't mind?
Okay, and then go ahead and call back on the housing.
Right, please.
Okay, that's fine. And then just very briefly, right now, since you're going to be having additional budget, uh, public hearings coming up, I would just want to speak on behalf of the Parking Recreation Department. And I would just want to encourage the City Council to revisit the Parking Recreation proposals in light of the fact that their budget was coming in under budget. And it looks like he's just doing some redirecting internally with staff and positions. So ultimately, authorizing any of the positions he is requesting does not look like it's going to increase the budget. As a matter of fact, he still looks like he's below. And, uh, the only other comment I wanted to go ahead and make was that a lot of cities, when it comes to their reserves, typically maybe it's only twenty-five percent of their budget or so. And I, and I think even though I understand the city has a lot of concerns, we're still pretty healthy in contrast to other cities, which something around over sixty-seven percent. So if the council could possibly reconsider what he's requesting, again, since he is coming in under budget on behalf of the Parking Recreation Department, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any, any other calls? Okay, John's indicating we don't have any other calls. Um, I think what we need to do is take a couple of minutes and, and to do, uh, to change and, and go from there. So we'll, can I adjourn this thing? I think that, anybody has any comments that they need to make about the budget to, to the staff right now? John, you have any more?
Nope, we're good for now.
Okay, we're gonna take a ten-minute recess and then convene the, the regular scheduled, uh, uh, council meeting. Okay, and we'll apologize to the community for, uh, this interruption, but a couple of people need to do things.